All right, microphones, let's turn our phones down. Or off, whatever you want to do with them. It's 1:03, this is a work session of the Marquette Township Board. We are missing two members, but they're on their way. Today's February 27th, 2018. It's Tuesday, not Monday.
Oh, Tuesday.
Not a big deal, I'll change that. So, roll call, Randy?
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Clerk Critari is here, and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Absent is Trustee Marks and Treasurer Johnson. They're excused, they're supposed to be coming. And Staff President is Manager Durant.
Thank you. Any public comment before we get going? Any questions, ladies, or anything? Nope, we're good, okay. Policy discussion, consideration, and development. I kind of asked the Board at the last Board meeting if we could get together and talk about our annual plan of work. It's already almost March, and we haven't really set it together. If you remember, I'll apologize in the beginning for my crazy throat, going back to the doctor again tomorrow. If you remember last year, we passed the policy governance and have sort of started that process, for the most part, changed our agenda a little bit. And we have not really gotten into this year's plan of work, and that's one of the, I don't want to say requirements, but it's a suggestion that policy governance falls to. So, there are ends and means, discussions that need to take place pretty much every month, except it looks like in May. And that goes back to the policies we already have in place. And it's linked into the connection between the Board and staff. One of the things with policy governance is that we rid ourselves a little bit more of the administrative duties, and pass that on to the manager and staff. And we have reports that will tie into that, so that we can go back and forth and know that the policies that we're implementing are understood and being done, as they should be. So, excuse me. One of the things that I did when we first started talking about this was put together my recommendations on an annual plan of work, and I sent that to the Board. And it's just ideas, like the fire department, where does that go? We've got the fire chief retiring, and we just got an ambulance, and we have capital, we know we're going to have equipment that we're going to have to be purchasing. So, those kinds of things are going to be on our radar this year. Do we want to do anything different with the budget? Do we want to talk about planning? Do we want to look at Public Works? We've talked about different water projects and how we want to do that going forward. So, those were just my suggestions. And Clerk Critari suggested that we get together and try to do January and February, rather than, and then we can catch up a little bit, rather than try to change the calendar. So, that's where we are today. From the manager's standpoint, Randy, did you want to add anything from the staff? Since this is kind of our first really work session on policy governance.
Well, from a staff perspective, as you've already mentioned, we are going to be looking at some transitions coming up over the next two to three years. This year, we know that Chief Demarest is going to be retiring, and we're just starting the recruitment process for that position, which is going to be a critical position going forward. The township's going to continue to grow over the next foreseeable timeframe, certainly in the next three to seven years, with projects that are currently in place or currently anticipated. That's going to impact the service demands on all the departments, but particularly on the emergency services departments, whether it's the Fire and Rescue Department or the Sheriff's Contract. There will be increasing demands that will be generated by not only the growth and development, but the changes that MDOT's doing to the US-41 corridor, and you know, all of those things, additional expansion of roads, and all of those impact the township. Probably within the next couple of years, Superintendent Public Works is going to be retiring, most likely. So, you know, you have a serious challenge there, that is, the position that's responsible for the water and sewer operations, the solid waste operations of the township, very sizable piece of your operating budget, a very critical piece of service to the residents. It has to be maintained and expanded in anticipation of future growth as well. At some point in time, I'm going to retire. I know people don't believe that, but you know, there comes a point where everybody says enough is enough. And I've been doing this here for almost 16 years, and between here and the county for 35 years, so it's, you know, it's getting close. But my current contract is through December of 2019. So, at that point, you know, when we renewed that contract, I made clear that it was up to the Board, whether that would continue beyond that or not. You still have a year of your term in place as of December of 2019. So, there'll be a decision point that you'll have to make, if you want to do something different, or if you want to go another year, and let the new Board decide. So, ultimately, that's up to you. But staff-wise, you know, certainly there has been, from Board to Board, as you know, if you look at the pictures on the back wall, there's been a lot of Boards seated since I've been the manager. And some were more hands-on than others. This Board is more, this particular Board is more, let staff do what they need to do and keep the Board informed, which isn't kind of concert with policy governance. You know, the whole purpose of policy governance is for the Board to establish the guidelines and the operating objectives for the duration of whatever the plan is, and to allow staff to do what they need to do and keep the Board informed on how they're accomplishing and interpreting what the directions are that you give. So, from that standpoint, the staff is supportive of the policy governance shift. We have operated staff-wise in a policy governance format for a number of years. I do allow the Department Eds that work under my direction to exercise their authorities within the policies that currently exist. They are responsible for their operations, and they're responsible to me to ensure that their operations are done effectively, efficiently, and within budget, and preferably below budget if possible. We've been pretty good with that. Where our challenge has come from is external. And what I mean by that is that things that are beyond the control of the Township Board or the Township staff have reduced our revenues. They have not reduced our demands, the demands that are placed on us, and they have not reduced our costs. Those are continuing to increase, both demands and cost. As I mentioned in the budget process this year, we are currently, in 2018, our revenue is the same as it was in 2014. Our expenditures are dramatically higher because of simple things like increases in utility costs that we're subject to, increases in things like the health insurance that we supply for our staff, the liability insurance that we supply to cover our liabilities, basically outside of staff. All of those things continue to increase. What's been happening is that, whether it's from the state, from the Governor, or from the Tax Tribunal, or from the Treasurer, taxes have been reduced. And they've been reduced for a number of reasons, or specific classes of property have been removed from taxation. All of those things damage our ability to fiscally operate at the same levels that we have. We had predicted about five years ago that 2018 would be the balance year, which you saw that it was in the budget process. And what we're trying to do now is to get ourselves in position to respond, I thought I turned it off, but I guess I just turned it to silent, get our position, get ourselves in position to be able to respond to whatever comes from the new legislature that comes into Michigan with the next election, and whatever happens on the federal level with health insurance, or any number of other things that impact us externally without control. So, that's the purpose of, from the staff standpoint, that's the purpose of what we're doing, and that is to give us basically guidance on what you want us to accomplish, and then we can let you know how we intend to accomplish that and do it. Simple as that.
Simple as that.
Simple as that, just like that. Lots of lottery tickets. But, you know, realistically, that, you know, we are somewhat of a lottery, you know, I joke with that, but we are somewhat of a lottery because we don't control what happens externally. We don't control the tax levels that we have, that's coming from outside of us. The only things that we actually control are internal costs and what the residents tell us they want.
And part of that, too, is the Planning Commission's going to be discussing, and they've kind of already have, another, I was going to say outside survey, but they're thinking they want to do it internally. We did a survey, was it 2011, I think? It's been quite a while. And that gave us a really good footprint of what the public was looking for. Obviously, the demographics of the township has changed, we might have more retirees, it's hard to tell. But the survey we commissioned back then was about a $10,000 project, and it was very thorough, and it gave us a really good insight on what people wanted. Obviously, they said roads were number one, because that's what we focused on for the next few years. Excuse me, and we've pretty much done that. Trails and recreation were number two. I mean, even snow, and everything included with roads was still number one, a couple of those categories together. So, Planning is working on, and the Planning Department staff provides, is working on questions, and I got a preliminary on some of that the other day, on how they see that coming about. I don't know who they're going to contact or how, but that's still our best avenue of finding out what people want. We're working for them, that's what we want to try to focus on. So, I asked you to bring your policy books and your calendar and the notes that I had provided you from before. Again, those were some of the suggestions I made. I was hoping you'd have others, or not, or we could narrow this down a little bit. We don't have to decide the whole year today. If we can just look at January and February and see what we think we want to do with those, if there's anything, maybe there's nothing we do. Maybe we just wait and schedule a March meeting, Tuesday night, and look at the next items. But if it's all right with you guys, I'd like to kind of go back and start with these two or three items, let's do something you want to share, or ask, or, Pete?
I just want to say one thing, listen to Randy, I start getting depressed here. And the question is, that a lot of people don't know, is how long does this thing, this Tax Tribunal, will take care of itself? Somebody to rule on it, somebody off-center.
Yeah, the case that we've been watching is the Escanaba versus Menards case. We've been watching that now for some time, because that was the, well, first of all, you have to understand, Tax Tribunal, you don't get the same judges all the time. Every time a case goes before, there's a rotating, it's like the Court of Appeals, basically. You never know what judges you're going to get to hear the case. It depends on who's next up on the docket. But that case went in favor of the City of Escanaba at the Tax Tribunal. The particular judge that heard that case ruled in favor of Escanaba and said, absolutely, this does not make sense. And that was then appealed by Menards to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals upheld the decision in favor of the City of Escanaba, and it was then appealed to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court remanded it back to the Tax Tribunal for rehearing with some restrictions, basically. In essence, they can no longer consider deed restrictions as reducing the value of the property, or take any one particular method of appraisal over others. They needed to take all three of the methods and come to a reasonable position on value based on the results of the three. That case, as far as we know right now, will not go to the Tax Tribunal before probably December of this year. The Tribunal has allowed the resubmital of evidence and documentation from both Menards and from the City of Escanaba, and there will be briefs from all of the others that did, Michigan Township Association, and the Michigan Municipal League, the Counties Association, they'll all enter briefs, and you know, so it'll be basically a rehearing. That'll take place probably in December, we probably won't hear anything until mid-19 on that. So, whatever that decision is, will set the standard for going forward, but it will not change anything that's already occurred. So, we will not get more money as a result of a favorable decision.
But it will stop.
But it will set the trend for future development, basically, in how they're appraised and how they're assessed.
A lot of the things, I talked to you the other day about you, about how we're doing and that, and even though we're a couple of years behind you, so we're dealing with 2018 values and your, on the 2014 money, you know, but yet, over the years, we've had it several times, this five-star Township. You know, the Township, even though some people think, oh, we're just spending money for this and that, the Township, the Board, all the committee members, all the planners and Township staff, they're trying to be very, you know, responsible to the residents. And to get the five-star award is something, you know. I think that we're trying to do it, watching the money from the Township residents, and I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Well, what Pete's referring to is, if you'll remember, it's the I-Labs study that's conducted by the University of Michigan on their Dearborn campus, basically, and they do an assessment, it's a survey. They send out a survey instrument that you fill out and you send back in, and they do assessment of how well your community is doing with regard to things like entrepreneurship, access to Internet, a variety of those things that make a community in line to be successful, basically. And five-star community is one that is at the top of the heap, so to speak, doing all that they can and being successful at it, and it goes all the way down to a one-star, basically, for those that are just beginning. But yeah, we have, you know, those years, with all of the years except one, that we've participated in that, and they're, I mean, they're honest surveys. We've been rated at five stars. The one time that we weren't, it was at four stars. So, I mean, you know, we are being recognized as a progressive community, which we are. I mean, if, you know, if you look around the UP, there's not much going on that we're not involved in around the UP, even northern half of the Lower Peninsula of Michigan. You know, we're, and I would say this even if I wasn't the Township Manager, but pretty well-run organization, and you know, and pretty successful in what we do. We've been very successful in acquiring grants, it's the reason we've been able to do some of the things that we've done, and the reason is, is because when you do the application process and it's investigated, they find that you typically do what you say you're going to do. And that is our reputation, is if we say we're going to do it, we do it. And we do it on budget or below budget. So, that's what Pete was referencing with the five-star community.
Okay, well, look, excuse me, let's look at the first couple of things on the calendar that's recommended. We look at 2.7, 2.8, 2.9 on ends monitoring, and then three on the means monitoring, which falls to the Board, the ends is the staff. So, 2.7 talks about grants and contracts. So, I just made a quick list, and let me know if you think of something else. I would say those that are involved would be any of our water projects. We have contracts with those, whether it's the loans, or other with the providers. We've got the Sheriff Contract and the Road Millage. So, I think those are the main three things that would fall under 2.7. We're working on the Sheriff Contract, we need to discuss our future water projects. The Road Millage is pretty much done, other than the maintenance side of it. So, I'm kind of wondering if you want to pull these apart? Do you have any other grants or contracts that you think we need to deal with? Do you want to jump to 2.8, which is the Emergency Manager Succession? Do you want to just touch on these, or do you want to delve into these individually right now? Because remember, I gave you this homework to look at this. Randy?
While Board members are pulling their notes together, you realize, we do have a pretty robust procurement policy in place. And, you know, and that covers, that covers grant process, it covers contracting, it covers bidding processes, things such as that. So, you know, when I did the review of this, and I submitted this to the Board back in December of 17, my analysis of the policies and where we are right now with regard to the policies. I think that procurement policy, and it's like five or six pages, it's a pretty good policy from the standpoint of operations, and we've been following that policy. And as you mentioned, we've got, we have a number of contracts, I mean, outside of labor contracts, which we have two of those. We have all kinds of contracts with the DEQ through our water and wastewater system. We have contracts with the Solid Waste Authority with regard to our refuse and our recyclables. We have contract with the Energy Heritage Recreation Authority. We have contracts with haulers, with North Country Disposal, those haulers. We have contracts with the Road Commission, we have contracts with all kinds of folks. Those are all governed by that policy, by that procurement policy in terms of the guidelines of it. Grant-wise, we've applied for just about every grant there is, and we've been pretty successful, including the last two with regard to the Downtown Development Authority submitting on the roundabouts, you know, so we just received those. The bigger contracts that I'm concerned about are the ones that the residents are funding, and I call them contracts because that's what they are, they're millage questions that went out that were passed. And we have been very successful with those. If you'll recall, the first one of those was for the, I call them the seven intersections. Basically, the very first millage question that we put out on roads, we had seven intersections around the township that we identified as being in need of repair. And that came in under budget. As far as the millage goes, we didn't have to levy the full millage. Then we did Werner Street. We did the redo of Werner when the Road Commission, as you'll recall, Werner Street from Commerce Drive to Ontario is under the auspices of the County Road Commission as a primary that connects to Ontario, so that's your primary truck route. US-41 Commerce to Werner, Werner to Ontario, and Ontario to Wright Street, that's one of the primary truck routes through the township. So, they constructed that portion of it, we then asked the residents to simply go from the 4.9 mills, I think it was 4.9 at the time, to back up to our five-mill cap for operations to put towards the rebuild of Werner. We did that, but with the taxable income growth while that was being done, we were about $74,000 to the good when Werner was finished, and we used that then to do Brookton Road. And that was part of the millage question, is if there was anything remaining from Werner, we would address the issues on Brookton Road because it was falling apart. So, we redid Brookton Road with that. So, those are the kinds of things that we've been doing. We leverage, basically, the millage, and we just finished the major road project. Residents voted into millage 100 and 1/2 mills over 15 years, basically, to reconstruct and rehab all of the local roads in the township, which we did over a three-year period, just finished that this last construction season, and now we're in the maintenance phase of that. And that's why we looked at 15 years, because that millage going forward will fund maintenance of those roads. We won't have to be reliant upon the Road Commission to be able to have enough funds to address the issues like potholes, cracks, things like that. We will have the funding to be able to do that, either through the Road Commission or through private contractors. So, you know, those are the kinds of procedures and processes that we already have in place that I think work well with your policy governance.
How does that tie in, Randy, to the reporting side of it? Because, like I said, I just wrote down two or three things. Do we need to be that specific? You're more familiar, we've been doing some training on policy governance, but you're familiar about the processes more.
Well, the way I envision, and the way the staff, and we've talked about it quite a bit, and basically the structure that we've got in place is, the staff, the primary staff, the planners, only administrators, Superintendent Public Works, and the assessor, will be basically doing summaries of where they are with the projects that they're working on. I will then summarize those into a single report to come to you. And with regard to this particular policy, what I will do is, I'll say, this grant was awarded on this date for this project, we've got this much completed, here's our anticipated completion date, and so on, so forth. Whether or not we anticipate any remaining funds afterwards that might be able to be used on something else, you know, so that's the kind of a report that you can expect to get from me that will cover all of the operation.
So, do we need to start with you giving us that background in the report form for at least, if nothing else, the contracts and the grants? Give us just an update of where we are, the dates, the amounts?
Well, I would see two things. You know, once a plan of work has been adopted, I would see two things. I would see probably a redo of this document that I gave to the Board several months ago, basically, with projections for 2018 and beyond, for the Board to be thinking about the kinds of things that administratively we see on the horizon, five, 10 years out, in terms of things that we need to start thinking about now, in terms of putting policies in place and starting discussions and conversations with agencies or entities or whatever, to get in grant cycle processes, to get into fundings. For instance, if, you know, a lot of discussion has been about Phase Two of the water project. If the Board were to say today, if this were a regular Board meeting and you had a unanimous motion that said tomorrow, start the process, it's going to take a year just to get through the permitting process with the DEQ, then it's going to take them probably another six months to approve the plans, and then you've got to go out for your competitive bidding process, there's got to be mobilization, all that stuff. You're probably looking at, you know, from the date you say go, you're probably looking at five years before you turn on a faucet and get water. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we need to be looking at on a rolling basis. And at the same time, you have to take a look at what's going on in Lansing. You've got a new Governor coming into place, you're going to have a new Cabinet, is that going to change the policies with the DEQ? You know, what's going to happen there? So, you just need to be kind of thinking about those kinds of things that, as you go forward in formulating policies, and to give the staff the authority to kind of be calling an audible if need be, you know, to change a plan at the last minute. Usually, when some of those things happen, you get like a two-week notice, you know, so you've got to do revisions, which means you have to get a hold of engineers and all kinds of things to get those revisions done. So, we need to, I guess the bottom line is, we're not always in a position where we can wait two weeks for your next meeting. You know, there are some authorities that we need to have to be able to jump in and report to you what happened.
Said with, let's see, how would we do it?
I guess one of the things that I would suggest possibly is that this thing that I gave to you guys in December is my interpretation of some of the policies, and maybe you might want to start with that to determine if that's reasonable in your view, because I do make some suggestions in here in terms of potential, at least to get started, type operation. I mean, that might be a starting point. Up to you, though.
Well, we do need some kind of a framework to start from. Like I said, with the water projects, Sheriff's Contract, if you see any more than that, but we should have a compilation of, there's not much you can do with the water projects because the main one that we're talking about, the expansion, that's on hold, I mean, we're not talking about yet.
Yeah, it's pretty much on the shelf. I mean, we've got the design, basically, what needs to happen with that one is, it just needs to be updated for costs, you know, current labor, current labor costs, current material costs, things such as that, so we can nail it down. But it's not going to be very far off what, excuse me, not very far off what the original estimate was, it's going to be reasonably close, because at that time, materials were high, labor was low. Now, you've got kind of a shift where labor has come up and materials have come down, so I think it's going to be relatively close. The big question is, what will it be five years from now? That's the big question that we have to kind of project.
So, if you could give us a list of, I mean, you mentioned solid waste and everything, I hadn't even thought about that, I was thinking specific contracts, but if you can give us a list of what that would entail for everybody? What we've got in place, if there's, whatever the cost is, what the expiration date, just so we have that to start from.
Do that.
That would be 2.7. That would give us, then we can decide if we want to go into any of those. The water project's not a contract right now, that's not something we're looking at. That would be future, maybe you put that on page two.
But what would be important for you from the standpoint of water is what right now is in the, you know, having a listing of all of the things right now that your Superintendent of Public Works is in discussion with the DEQ about future needs. You know, as for instance, you know, we know we've got Myers, roughly as of December 31st, about 50% completed, so they're on the tax roll at 50% of what their value is. They're going to be open in May. Once they come online in May, we know there are developers looking at other property to the west of them and to the north of them as well. So, right now, we don't have full service in those areas. So, I know Kirk is looking at what is it that might be needed, what size of type, what size of utility pipes, you know, what's going to be necessary going up that way? Is there rock, is there not rock, you know, all those kinds of things. So, he's been looking at that in terms of his long-term planning and building it for future budgets. So, something from Public Works saying, 2019, we anticipate this, 2020, we anticipate this, 2021, we anticipate this, so you can have a laundry list of dates, basically, to be considering, because you're going to be going in, believe it or not, in three months, you're going to be starting your 2019 budget process. You know, I mean, here we are, we're there already. It's, you know, Friday is March 1st, and it's usually June 30th is what we base the actual budget figures on, but we start in May. We start May 1st in putting the budget together. We start May 1st in putting the budget together in terms of what is it that's going to be incorporated in the budget? What are we going to be doing? What are we not going to be doing? Those kinds of things, you know, predicated upon year end 2018.
So if we had a current, then, what do we expect for 2018? What do we have in place? What are we working on? And then future for each department? That would kind of get us started with all that phase of it.
Yeah. And those are the kinds of things that you'll have to have a handle on in terms of what types of development are we looking at? You know, the developers we're talking with, what types of, is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it retail? Is it manufacturing? You know, what is it? Because they all have different demands. You know, residential, if it's residential development, it's going to demand a lot more water and sewer. I mean, they're very heavy on water and sewer. If it's retail development, mainly they're impacting now fire protection, police protection, those kinds of things in some of the service-type areas. If it's manufacturing and industrial, they're going to be a mix. They're going to have potential for, depending on what kind of production it is, maybe high-volume water. If it's another tourist-type operation, I mean, you know, depending on what that is, now you've got traffic issues, you know, those kinds of things that all have to go into that mix of discussion about what kind of a policy do you want to adopt.
Are you thinking of cost also, Lynn? You want from?
Well, from the contract perspective or the grant idea, it's what do we have in place? What are we expecting? What are we working on? Like, page two would be what we're working on, and then three would be beyond that. So it's like 18, 19, and 20 would be what I was thinking. So, you know, what, the solid waste authority, let's say, use that as an example. You know, where are we right now? Do we have a commitment? If we do, what's the dollar number? What is the expiration date? If there is one in the contract, is that something that's going to have to be renewed? And then 19, what are we projecting? 20, what are we projecting? That's what I'm thinking. And of each one of these contract or grant-type, a compilation, whether that's the recreation side of it, you know, we're working on that too with, we've got some Shrumwood stuff we have to finish up yet. So just a real, a real good table of contents of where we are.
But even within those, you know, as you mentioned, solid waste, you know, within the solid waste, we need a projection on potential life enclosure, you know. So we need, you know, from the treasurer's standpoint, we need to know if we've got sufficient funds in that closure fund. You know, are they talking 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, 50 years? We keep talking about all of those kinds of things, and they keep extending the life, but then they come back, you know, after we've beat everybody up about going, getting on recycling, and now they're not taking glass and recycling, it's going into the landfill. Well, you start pouring all kinds of glass into the landfill, and what are you doing to your liner? Now, does that shorten the life of it? Does that not shorten the life of it? You know, those are all issues that we need to be aware of, because if that landfill closes, we've got our share that we're going to have to fund, and we've been putting money away to do that, those closure costs. So that has to blend into it as well.
Well, the authority said at one of their last two meetings that I went to, two or three meetings ago, that they were going to stop funding their part of that 75 cents per ton or something for future. Well, if they're going to stop funding it, then we should stop funding it.
No, what they're saying is, is they feel that they have enough stockpiled. They've put away enough that they feel comfortable that they can abandon putting money in for a period of time. We don't know what that period of time is, because it's not a whole lot of discussion about that. But my concern with it is, is that if you're now starting to put all of the glass, and I don't know of anybody else, but, you know, I've amassed a fairly goodly-sized bag of glass that can't go in recycling anymore, what do you do with it? You know, it goes into the garbage. And once it goes into the garbage, it goes into the landfill. And once it gets into the landfill, when it gets crushed, it's now sharps that are in there. Are we shortening the life of our landfill by doing that? I don't know whether it's cheaper to do that or to keep replacing the crushing equipment and recycle it.
Well, and the demand has a big part of that, too.
It does.
If nobody's buying glass, they can't get rid of it.
Well, market does. But again, you know, it's, it is something that, you know, even though we're only a part of the authority, it's an authority issue. Going to run out of room pretty quick.
Well, let's start with that. If staff can put that together for 2.7, that'll kind of get that off of our plate. That's grants and contracts. Randy?
And I don't think, I'm looking at it, I don't think it has to change either. It looks pretty solid to me.
Policy itself?
Yeah.
Yep. It's just one sentence. Township management team may not enter into any grants and contract arrangements that fail to emphasize primarily the production of ends and secondarily the avoidance of unacceptable means. That's a short policy.
Yeah, but that leads to the policy that we have, policies that we have in place, which I attached, that, you know, as an example of what we already have in place to address that. And then as we go along, we'll refine those policies.
Anything else on that or questions? Okay. So staff will start with that side of it for information. 2.8 is emergency manager succession. And that's 2.8 and 2.9 are two separate ones. Okay. And basically, it's just 2.81, it just says, the township manager will not leave critical passwords and key contact information inaccessible to the supervisor. We've talked about that numerous times, never just really got to it.
Well, I've been putting, I've been putting a manual together, basically, and, you know, identifying all that stuff. And it's something that needs to be in place. You know, and that is, as we go forward, that is one of the things that the board is going to have to face. Right now, we are getting to, you know, and I'm sure the Recreation Committee will support this comment, we are getting to the point where we don't have enough staff to keep doing all the things that we're committing to do. You know, as a, for instance, you know, when we keep adding, we add trails and things such as that, we're getting short. The succession plan is, we really don't have any depth. I don't have an assistant manager, you know, so that could move up. So, you know, that's one of the things that is going to be facing the township as you continue to grow. And it's probably going to be on, it'll most likely be beyond my tenure as township manager. But in the next five years, if everything that's currently in the hopper comes to fruition, you're going to be almost doubled in size in terms of economy, not necessarily, you know, size, physical size, but the economy and the demand, service demands and residential demands that you currently have. And we're doing okay right now. We're all right right now. But it's going to reach a point pretty soon where you're going to have to seriously consider looking at staffing. And one of the very large hindrances that you have is unlike other forms of government, like cities and the counties, you're capped at five mills operating, period. That's what you have, is five mills operating unless the residents vote in extra millage. And history has shown that residents are not likely in these economic times to vote in extra millage to add more people to the township staff. They want more service. They don't want more bodies. So it's going to be a struggle. You know, and right now, you're at 4.9 mills of that five mills. You know, you roll back heavily, rolls you back every year a little bit. You're operating right now at 4.9 mills. So you are going to be having to look at some things like you've done with the fire department, with a special assessment, maybe setting up assessment districts and things such as that, where the entities within that specific district or that specific service pay the price as a special assessment as opposed to a millage. So those are, you know, law enforcement. And that's where that discussion came up on the contract, you know, several board meetings ago, was maybe we need to be starting to look at, instead of taking $200,000 out of the general fund, round numbers, it's actually $195,000, I think it is. Instead of taking that out of the general fund, why not put that on a special assessment or put that on a millage question? The only issue with a millage question is, is that if a millage gets defeated, you don't have law enforcement. A special assessment goes from year to year. You have a public hearing, you talk about what the cost is going to be, and then it just goes forward. So, I mean, that's going to be a significant struggle for the board coming up, because right now, as you know, labor costs, because we don't produce a product, we produce services, our labor cost is about 65, 70% of our total budget, because we have to have bodies to do it.
Not only, you talk about labor as far as bodies, but as we get bigger and expand a little bit, and they want more services, you're going to have to look at different equipment.
Oh, yeah. Different equipment.
And have the same people running around with a snow blower and taking care of all the stuff that we have to do.
Well, as a, for instance, you know, we don't have 24/7 coverage. What we have is on-call people, you know, particularly in the water and sewer. So, you know, middle of the night, if your water isn't working, you call in, somebody gets dispatched that's on-call to come and take care of that. There's going to come a point where you're going to need to have people staffing. You're going to have to have somebody physically sitting there, because at 3:00 in the morning, when your toilet's not working, do you want to wait two hours before somebody gets there? Or do you want someone there now? You know, those kinds of things. And those are growing pains. They're the kinds of things that, as your residential section grows, which it has, and you're going to see that when your assessor puts together the estimated taxation for 19, we are experiencing residential growth. And one of the projects that's going forward will substantially increase the residential component of the township as well. But those are the kinds of things that you need to be looking five, six, seven years out, and how is that going to be accomplished? And how's that going to be funded? And what's it going to look like? Or what services do we not provide anymore? You know, that's the other side of it. What do we not do? There's no requirement for you to have a contract with the sheriff's department. That's something that the board, prior board, established to provide that additional level of targeted protection within the township. But there's no requirement for you to do that. If you canceled that contract, or if that contract was canceled by the sheriff, sheriff would still be obligated to provide those services at township as part of the budget. Well, at their serviceable level. You know, it depends on what the county board does with their budget, you know, that kind of thing. But you do have some of those services, and recreation is another one. You know, all the things that we've been doing with recreation, there is no requirement for us to do that. But it is what the residents, as you mentioned, the survey, every time we do a survey, the residents, you know, we've got a transitioning population. I mean, you know, people want to bike, they want to walk, they want to hike, they want to not necessarily have to take their car. And when they do want to take their car, they don't want to be on US 41. There's all kinds of those things that are transitional that we're dealing with, you know, as well as other communities around us are at the same time.
This is the best example of policy governance, just what we're doing here. Excuse me. We're not talking about the day-to-day stuff that administrative people are doing for us. We're talking about the picture.
Big picture.
The big picture, what we have to do five, 10 years down the line. This is what this body should be doing. And that's why I felt this was so important to change, too. And I think it's going to work pretty well. So 2.8, you said you were already putting some of that together?
That's the easy part. You know, just putting a manual together is the easy part. The difficult part is going to be to, let's assume that I do retire at the end of 19, December of 19. In January, you're going to need somebody in place that understands township operations, that understands where you're at with your growth and things such as that. And you don't get that in a book. So, you know, there's going to be some recruitment that needs to be done, and you're going to be in a position, basically, to hire a new township manager, either from within or from outside, that is going to be able to step in and keep that momentum going, basically, and, you know, not skip a beat necessarily. So, you know, we don't, we have such a small staff that we really don't have a lot of, we're so compartmentalized. I mean, assessing is compartmentalized, planning and zoning is compartmentalized, water and sewer is compartmentalized, and they don't really have the, you know, manager's the only one that's really got the big picture overall in terms of what assessing is doing that impacts public works, that may impact planning and zoning, and, you know, whether or not the sheriff is, you know, scrolling on the highway, and, you know, how many tickets are being ridden? Are they adequately reducing the speed and the distracted driving? Do we have people standing in the driveways with signs? You know, all kinds of things. You know, so those are all, it's basically what, it's what your motto of catch the vision has been all about. I mean, for years, it's catch the vision of this community. What is this community all about? What does it look like? What do the residents want? What do the visitors want? And how do we accommodate all of them within a budget that we have? That's your big picture. You know, knowing what it is, that, you know, most of the growth and development that's going to go on in this immediate area is going to be here, because we have the land and we have the utilities and the infrastructure.
What's your problem?
I don't have one.
Just us.
When the time comes that you do decide to retire, how long in advance do you think it would be to have a person in place that you can work together with and pass the information on?
Ideally, six months. So, you know, if it's the board's desire, you know, when 2019 gets here, if you think you want to not necessarily extend the contract for another year, then in January, you need January of 19, you'd be, need to be ready to start doing the recruitment process, targeting somebody being here by July 1st.
That'll come upon us real fast.
Yeah, it's March. So, I mean, that's just realistic, you know, to be able to get out and understand what's going on in the township, to get involved with the DEQ, to get involved with all of the issues that are going on with water and sewer, and, you know, long-term plans and political lay of the land, political environment, assuming it's somebody from outside the area. You know, you have to get acclimated to the political environment and threats and opportunities, and, you know, all of those kinds of things that you just don't pick up overnight. You need some time to, after you shake hands and say, how are you? You get to know, really know what the other people are doing.
Yes, Randy? So I think that, so basically, your monitoring report for us for that 2.8 would be probably that manual you're creating, so.
For the supervisor, and then the supervisor would be able to report to the board that it's in hand. It's not something that you want to publish, because most of it's confidential information.
Okay. So 2.7, 2.8 are pretty much done. 2.9, collaboration with other entities. In order to maximize achievement of ends, the township manager shall not fail to explore strategic partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation and to optimize collaboration with other entities where appropriate. That seems to me, it's kind of an ongoing thing, and this will tie into your successor at whatever point. So that, I don't know that it has to be looked at, it's just that we're acknowledging it. If you think of anything when you're putting your plan together, you can add it.
Well, we've all, ever since I've been here, I mean, we've been all about local cooperation and local working together type activities as much as we can. We run into issues as others don't want to play. You know, so, okay, we understand that. But, you know, if the framework ever is there that, you know, as a, for instance, we have a joint water system with the city of Marquette. I mean, we are connected. We have a joint system. Most people don't recognize it, unless they've been listening to the meetings, don't recognize that we actually serve most, well, not most, but a large portion of the city of Marquette from our Cox tank. Water comes out of the lake through the city's treatment plant, gets pumped to our Cox tank, and we back pump it to everybody that's west of Lincoln Avenue. We serve them directly, the city serves the rest. And then we serve, you know, the township, Trowbridge and the area. And then our wellfields, our five wells down south of Grove Street, serve the Grove and the Northwoods districts. You know, they have purely township water. But if there ever is an issue where an ore boat sinks on top of the intake out in Lake Superior, we can backfeed to the city and provide them water from our wellfields. Same thing. I mean, so we do have an interconnected system. We connect at two locations with master meters, so we know both directions, what water's flowing in both directions. So, I mean, that's a, you know, those are the kinds of collaborations. Our well system, if we finish Phase Two, we're going to be within seven miles of Nagani's well system. So there is a potential for a connected system all the way from Lake Superior to West Ishboming. I mean, that potential is there if you can ever get off the dime and get a water authority in place, which we've been unable to do for the last 10 years. It just doesn't seem to work.
Yeah, sewer connections.
Nobody's interested in talking to us about it.
Well, and stormwater, Pete just mentioned the sewer system. You know, we could do that, too. You know, we could do that, too. The problem with the sewer system is, is that we've got so much up and down and up and down, that you've got to have pumped and gravity, and pumped and gravity, and everything else, and that's a pretty expensive operation. But stormwater, everything goes downhill. I mean, it should be, shouldn't be that difficult of a, of a process to get a stormwater system in place, but we don't have one.
So, those three were the ones that we were talking about for January. Might as well stay right with the ends idea, because two point three is the February one. Compensation and benefits. And this involves employees, consultants, contract workers, volunteers, collective bargaining. And the township manager takes care of that. And I think some of this information will fall to that first report for all the grants and the contracts.
It will, because we have, all of our staff are covered by collector bargaining agreements, with the exception being I have a separate contract with the board. So, you know, all of your, all of your staff are under a contract. And, you know, those are contracts, mine, mine is, every three years, you do mine. We have, the Afsmi bargaining unit is through termination twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. And the, the administration professionals is open right now, we're, we're talking with them. And, you know, so that, that contract is open. So those provisions are all there. We have a large group of folks in the fire department, thirty-two of them, that are under a separate type of an arrangement. They are paid on call, they have their quote contract within their, within their operating guidelines, which falls under the townships, it's subservient to the township's policies and procedures. So, I think that's pretty well covered. We have very few agents. Those would be, the way, way that would come in is if we have a large construction project that we're doing, like the road project, for instance, we hired, we hired engineers and architects to manage that process for us. They did that under a contract, and that contract is very specific in terms of what their responsibilities and liabilities were. So, I think we have a, right now, we have a pretty good, pretty good system. You know, we've been, we've been operating under policies and procedures, and I don't want people to think that we've just been saying, well, what are we going to do today? You know, we've had a pretty good policy and procedure manual, and it's about that thick, if I would have brought it in here. But the, the theory behind it is changing, and that's, that's what's, that's what policy governance is all about. It's establishing a format for you, the board, the governing body, to be informed on a regular basis of what's happening in the individual operations and departments of your government that you're managing, is to keep you informed. And that process has not been in place previously. It's only been when issues come up, you get staff reports, when there's recommendations, you get a staff report on the recommendation in the background, but not on a big-picture type of a basis. And that's, and that's what policy governance does, will give you the big-picture view. So as a, as an elected governing body member, you have a pretty good handle if you get asked a question on the street, or in front of a camera, or by newspaper reporter, you at least have some background in terms of what that is, or you have a document that you can go to and say, well, let me check. That kind of thing. You don't get caught, I don't know, go talk to them. You know, that's, that's not where you want to be.
This gives the board an opportunity to make sure that staff is interpreting correctly.
Correct.
What, what the policy is.
Well, and we just had an example of that. We just had an example of that, a financial example. We just had one, where the communication was not clear. It, well, we shouldn't say it wasn't clear, it was not interpreted the way it was intended. You know, and that was, that was an interaction between two people, and it's caused some angst among a couple of township residents, but it's been addressed. It's fine. So, you know, that would not have occurred had policy governance been in place.
Yeah, probably not. Okay. Then we can go back to, or go over to the means monitoring from the board perspective, and that's number three, which is commitments, governance process, global governance commitment. There's quite a few pages on that, but, see that Marquette Township achieves appropriate results for appropriate persons at an appropriate cost, and avoids unacceptable actions and situations. So this whole section covers our governing style. And that and three point three are January and February. Three point three is members, board members' code of conduct. So, those two kind of flow together. There's four, five pages, six pages on governance process, more than that, seven, eight, yeah, about eight pages. And it gets into the specifics of information, whether it's with bids, or looking at public information, transparency. A lot of this is a communication, governing style. I don't know how, again, like, like Randy said, this is stuff that's already been in place. That's why it was so easy for us to edit the policies and put them into place, because, because we were already doing it, for the most part. And now this, this gives the, what's the word?
That's behaviors.
Yeah, but it gives the staff their groundwork, or their base to work from.
Yeah, basically, what you've got is section two. You know, section one is an overall, it's an overriding type thing. Section two basically defines for employees, for your, your employees and your staff, their behavior expectations in the performance of the functions that you delegate to them. Section three is the other side of it. It's how the board behaviors are expected to be, to be regulated by your statutory authorities and by your, your legal requirements. So, and it's things like, you know, the, the code of conduct, you know, the thou shals and thou shall nots, it's, you know, it's like your, your Ten Commandments. You know, so I mean, that's, that's how policy governance is set up. Basically, it, it defines whose responsibility, what sections of the government are in terms of making them work, and how you make it work. So the, the two section, the two point oh through eight or nine, whatever it is, defines for your staff and for your employees what your expectations of them are in the performance of their duties. Section three is for the public to have defined what their expectations for you as board members should be, in terms of your operation as a governing body.
Yeah, and we spent quite a bit of time working on these, there's a lot of three one, three two, three three, three four, you know, all the way down to the board members' code of conduct, page and a half. It talks about deliberation and discussing contact with members of the media, and, you know, there are specific people that, that they need to speak with in the township. Trustees, the trustees' basic responsibility is the funds, the fiduciary responsibility of the township. That's the basic thing that all of us have to adhere to, but the trustees, that's really all they do. The officers have specific statutory duties, whether it's communication, or contracts, or signing, or guaranteeing, we're the three that do that. Otherwise, we fall as a body. We have to all do the same thing. We can't go off. Once, it, it went back to the training that we had with the hats, with Susan Radwan. Once you leave this room, that hat comes off. You might be a board member, but you cannot do anything in the township as a board member, because you're one of seven, or in some townships, one of five. And that's real hard for anybody to understand when they come here, when they're out in the public, and then they come to this level. Everything behind this table is way different. It's way different than what you expect when you're standing, even at the podium.
Yeah, basically, it's the board speaks with its own voice, even though you've got seven opinions, or potentially seven opinions, or more.
So, I think, I think we've pretty much touched on these. I think, I feel pretty good about what's here. I don't, I didn't see anything when I reread this that I want to change. We spent a lot of hours putting this together. Again, it was based on policies we already had in place, we just didn't really finalize. Well, they were finalized, but they were implemented differently. And I think this is good. The second part of this, unless somebody else wants to comment, is what are we going to do with the rest of the year? And it isn't even so much, we can get together and do a work session in March for these other two items, talk about them. We can do it at the board level, spend half an hour, twenty minutes. But we need to figure out what we're going to work with this year. You know, we know that we're going to do the sheriff's contract, we know that'll come up in June. The villages for the roads are already in place. We need to decide something on the fire, if we're gonna, we need some kind of a capital something. We know from past experience in the last couple of years, we've talked, we talked about the assessment side of it versus the village side of it, and one allows you to capital, capture capital, the other one does not. So if we need a new fire truck tomorrow, we don't have money saved for that, we're not allowed to do that. So, that was going to be one of our discussions, is how do we handle capital? Do we put another village in place for, like, whatever, point two-five, or point one, or whatever, and just put that away for capital? We can do that. We, we can't take, you know, five thousand, ten thousand out of the budget and put it in a savings account and say that's for capital. We're, we're not allowed to do that legislatively speaking. So, that's one of the discussions I think we need to have. And then Randy mentioned, when we were talking about the contracts, he talked about the library contract, the heritage trail, the sheriff's contract. But my concern is, what are we going to deal with this year? That's what we need to establish. Like I said, sheriff's contract, we look at the fire department, that we know that's going to change this year. Thoughts? Does anybody, do you want to talk about water project? I don't mean tonight, I mean, or today.
Well, the first thing we have to do with the water project is, before we do anything, is you've got to tell the manager, will you update the in-house, will you update those costs? That's the first thing you have to do. And then you can, then the discussion can start.
And that's what I want to know. Do we want to put that on the calendar and have Dave, have somebody talk about that? Have the manager get that information? Do we want to put it off till next year? Go ahead, Dave.
We already had four or five items that were set up, way back in December that we were going to talk about. Two months have successfully gone by, and we haven't talked about any of them yet. If nothing else comes out of this work session, I would like to see those four or five, five items put into a priority, add whatever you want to add to them, but we need to get on with those discussions, because we sit here talking about little bits and pieces of each one of those, and we really don't need to do that. We need to set aside an agenda item to talk about public works and talk about phase two. But we need to set aside a, a time to talk about that and cover it in depth, send a manager away with what we need for information to make our decision, and move on to the next thing until it comes, until the information comes back. But we need, I guess I'm a little frustrated in the fact that we're sitting here for two months, and we haven't got any of that done yet, and the time's only getting shorter. I think if we come out of anything today, and it's nice to review these policies, but it's, those are just policies. I hope we don't spend the whole year working on policies, and we don't set a plan at work down. And you put five items out there, and if you want to talk about the sheriff's contract, and add that, the item might be for that. I think it's just a matter of arranging them in a priority order, and you can always change them. If something comes up and you need to move one up or move one back, that's a simple decision at a board meeting to do that, and then just do it. But we really need to get going on this and start talking about it. As soon as we found out we had an extra three years on that contract, we just said, oh, there's no rush. But up until that point, we said, Jesus, it's, it's going to end in two thousand twenty-five, we'll never get it done if we decide to do it. So, I think we need to decide, we haven't even decided what we want to do yet. If we want to pursue a water independence thing, or if we want to pursue a contract with the city, we haven't even made that decision yet.
We don't have the information.
Right, correct. So we need to talk about it at a board level and decide what information we need, because that'll be at least thirty to sixty days to get that information.
So we actually need to talk about the sheriff's contract in May. Would that be right? Randy, is that enough time?
May, June, you've got thirty.
Yeah, sheriffs can be coming back.
Till June first, right?
Yeah, sheriffs can be coming back to you at the end of June, basically, with his report, in terms of what, what they've been able to accomplish, in terms of your concerns with costs.
So we should be able to put a work session together, probably in May, so we have, or April, so we have some time to actually talk about it.
What are you going to make a decision on the sheriff's contract in April if you don't have his report?
Well, we haven't talked about where we even are right now. We haven't talked about, I'm, what I see happening between now, this six months, and the next six months are two different plans of attack. Because we put, we left it with what we had to look at, expecting it's probably going to change in June, right?
Don't know, I haven't seen a report.
Right. So until we figure out the direction we want to go, what, are you saying that you want to wait until after June until we get the sheriff's report and then talk about it?
My question is, is when we decided to just do the contract and take a review on it in June, there's supposed to be a report forthcoming from the sheriff's department. If we don't have that report, what do you base your decision on, as to whether we want to continue or not?
That's what I was asking. So you don't want to have a discussion beforehand of what we expect, you want to wait until after we get the report?
It'd be nice to know what we got, and then we can determine if that's what we wanted or if that's not what we want.
Okay.
You actually have two things with the sheriff's contract. Number one is you had some items that you wanted to see wording changes in the contract, which we can go forward with and do, if the board wants to do that. And, you know, at the last board meeting, what we have is we have the original contract with some attachments to it that address some of the questions. If you want those incorporated into the contract in language, as opposed to attachments, we can do that, to have to you for May. Then, once the sheriff comes back to you with the financial side of it, you can decide, A, whether you're continuing the contract for July through December, whether you're not continuing the contract, or you accept the revised language, and go forward with the contract. I mean, it's, I would see that being the way you would do that.
Well, I don't remember that as a, as a discussion about how you want the contract changed, as much as I remember an attachment to that, which is a memorandum of understanding of what that contract actually means, and what, what the explanation is of what we're assuming is going to happen, with respect to the car. And there's a number of things, and I pointed out a few at the last meeting, is what, what do you want in that memorandum of understanding? I don't think we need a whole work session on that, it could just be an agenda item on the board.
That's where my intention was, yeah.
Yeah, this is supposed to be the agenda. That's why I'm trying to pin it down to the month. What, what are we going to put on there? So, May, we can talk about the addendum to the sheriff's contract, or memorandum, whatever you call it.
They already made a lot of changes on it, you know, as far as the reporting and the filing, when they bring them into the jail and stuff like that, so take.
Operational.
Operational changes were made already. Are we happy with those, or is that enough, you know, and move on to the next?
Well, no, those are the things I don't think we'll know about, if we're happy with them or not, until we see how it's affected it. And that's going to be in his report.
Right.
So if we look at the amend, addendum, we could do that in May, and then we'll get the report, I'm assuming, June first, or shortly after that.
I, I mean, I personally feel that the memorandum of understanding could be done at any time, because it's not changing anything. It's just clarifying what that contract says.
Well, where do you want it in the calendar, then? I'm just trying to get this on.
Put it any place, you can put it in next Tuesday's camera, agenda.
Well, if it's closer to when we're going to have the discussion, we won't have to go over it again. So if it's in May, we talk to them in June, it'll be a little more timely.
I guess I, I saw two discussions there.
Okay.
I saw first, what do you want in that memorandum of understanding? The second discussion, and the more important discussion that we're going to have about whether the contract is going to continue on after June, is based on the report that comes out of the sheriff's department. So, having that in May, I don't, unless he's coming out two months early with his report, I don't see where that, putting it on the agenda in May is going to be productive.
To have a discussion about what the addendum contains, that's what I want to establish.
You're talking about that?
Memorandum, whatever, yeah. I'm calling it addendum.
Don't see why we have to wait that long to have that discussion.
We'll just have to go through it again when he comes up, that's fine. Where would you like it? I'll erase it.
March, next week.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a brief discussion next week, and see if everybody agrees with it.
Second meeting of, of, you want it at a board meeting, or you think it's?
Sure.
Second meeting in a month.
I don't think it's that big of a discussion, you either agree with it, or you don't, or want to add something, or take something away.
That's all, I'm trying to get written down.
I would say, I would say target the second meeting, because it, you know, we're.
First one's already getting.
We're, we're almost at the beginning of March now, so it would be, we'd have to draft something, shoot it to the sheriff, have them review it, get back to us, and then bring it to the board. So I would suggest.
Second board meeting.
First meeting might be a little tight.
Okay.
Second meeting in March would be fine.
And if I could ramble on for a minute.
Ramble away. You have forty-seven minutes.
Well, we come up with, we come up with five items, and it was public works, key position replacement search, planning department, budget, and the fire department. I would think that you would take a look at one of those every month, until they're done.
That's what I'm trying to do. So we got the sheriff's contract on the calendar for the second meeting in March.
I think that the next most important thing we need to talk about is public works and phase two, and what we're going to do with that.
I agree.
Because public works needs some direction on what they should be looking at, to send a report back to us, so that we can make a. to send a report back to us so that we can make a decision on whether we're gonna proceed in which direction. And that's a couple of months out of gathering information, so that needs to get on the agenda. We need to make that decision. To make that decision, I would think we need a report from the manager just very much in line with all the statements he's been making for the last two or three months with where this has gone and where he expects to see it go, contract versus phase two. And there's a lot of other things that weigh into it. Development possibilities out of four ninety-two, Morgan Meadows, Mason's Bluff. All those come into that and that, a nice summary out of the manager at the meeting that this initially comes up at so that we can make a decision whether we're gonna proceed to explore phase two development or not. Because that's got a whole lot of work to do with public works and what he's gonna do.
How much time would you like to put that together, Randy?
Three o'clock, two o'clock?
Yeah, he's got it all together, he's presented it a number of times.
The only thing we really need to do is to get, you know, back out and do some survey work to find out what price of materials are at this point.
Well, I don't think we need to even take it that far yet to make a decision.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
We need to take a look at what happens with the city contract, what you think is gonna happen.
Different options.
And, and what you think is gonna happen with what, there's two or three options there. And they were all included, included in the STANTEC report.
And it's easier, and it's easier now that the city has shifted from hundred cubic feet to a thousand gallons.
Instead of reading all of that supporting documents that came in the STANTEC report, we need it all boiled down to a summary. And, and this is the options, this is
The cost.
The costs that are associated, approximate, nobody wants.
Right.
Ballpark, it's gonna be very close.
It's gonna change anyway, you hear about years of change.
And, and if it looks close enough that we wanna pursue a phase two exploration, then we can just give the nod and that's, they're on to the next step. After that, I would think that key replacement person, now we keep thinking about the manager leaving. The manager's not leaving for a year and eight or nine months if he leaves then.
Well, wait, now, don't get ahead of me. Where do you want the, how fast do you want Randy to put the report together on it?
As soon as he can have it together, we should have it on the agenda.
The first meeting in April?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
That, that'll go in the first meeting in April on that. So, what you're looking for, so Phil's clarified for the manager. So, what you're looking for are options, cost, and basically where do we go from there, right? Get us like two or three options.
Options with the, options with an explanation of what those options
And cost are.
No, entail as far as what effect phase two has on development, what it has on, on water independence. There's, for every option, there is a list of things that are being
Subsections, yeah.
Are being controlled there. And we should be aware of, when we say we wanna proceed with phase two, we should know that we're not just talking about phase two. We're talking about the development possibilities that are gonna stem from that.
The costs are for the residents.
What the cost is gonna be for, in ballpark numbers. And we, that all ties into that survey that, that the board will see the second meeting in March to give them an idea which way they wanna go with that.
Well, even in the last five years, the development, especially this way, has changed. What was expected or new people coming in.
That's why we need input from the manager.
That's, yeah. That's, yeah. Yes, Ernie, you've been patient in the meeting.
We're talking about phase two and everything else. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. We want a list of all the possible options this township has for water, period.
That's what you said.
Right.
Yeah.
That is our own system, purchasing it from the city, being partnershiped with the city. That means like the sewer. All these options gotta be thrown on the table.
Or for none of the above.
For, before none of the above it is done. As far as cost factors, we have to have the options ahead of us. Once we pick two or three options, then we take the next step and say, okay, how are we gonna pay for this, or how is it gonna be paid for? That. I don't think we wanna move too fast, but we, we gotta move because we have a twenty twenty-eight date. And how many of us will be here? We don't know. But it's gonna take at least two years to get to the point of turning dirt and that. So, we have a few day, few years, but we have to start moving now to do it. But what I'm looking for is all the possible options this township has for providing water to the residents and the businesses and that.
And what are the costs associated with it?
That's the second phase. I think first thing is, what are all the possible options we have?
Yeah, but I think we can talk about that in ten, fifteen minutes. What we wanna do is, if we're gonna have it on an agenda or a work session, is have enough comprehensive information to go to the next step. And if we decide during that discussion, we don't wanna go to the next step, then we just say, okay, stop.
That's fine.
Need more information or whatever. But we can't just have Randy put together four options and then that's it. You know, what do we go with? We have to have that, that other compilation to determine if we're going to the next step in the discussion.
But he already told us what they were, you know.
Yeah, we just need it more refined and then
If you just, we've, we've got the reports, we've paid thousands of dollars for these reports.
Yep.
And they're all, they're all current because we haven't done very little of what's in those reports. If you just list the options that are in the reports, along with any other options that have made themselves known since then, and just the pluses and minuses of each one of those options, then you got something to look at and you can make an informed decision on which one of those options you wanna pursue. Obviously, the most time-consuming option is if you decide to go with phase two. The other options, depending on what they may be, I mean, the, the report had a water authority with, with the other townships. There was extended a contract with the city, which apparently they don't wanna talk about. But there are a number of options, and there's gotta be a plus and minus with each one of those.
Well, and the minus on some of those options is that we don't have any control. How many times have we talked about the water authority with McGonighe Township or the city, or Sands, or any of them? And we just can't get off the ball. So, whether we think that's an option or not, it still may not be workable.
Then that would come into the minus column.
Right, that's why I said, it would be a minus.
What's workable, what's not, what's within the future, next ten?
We have control over. So, public works discussion, April, would you like the first or second meeting to have it ready?
Whichever.
Why don't we take the second meeting? Because the first meeting's always loaded up.
Well, the options, you know, the options that, that Ernie and Dave and I have been talking about, you know, what options we have are in the report. I mean, we've already analyzed all of the potential options, they're analyzed. The issue is, what, we've got all those analyses that were done, let's see, they were most recently updated in two thousand thirteen. So, we've got, we've got all of that analysis. But what isn't overlaid on that is, who are we talking to about what properties are potentially going to be developing? And where are they gonna be developing with what kind of development? So, we can project what the demand is going to be in terms of the draw. And that's the piece that needs to be, be laid out there. And that's what Dave's talking about is, you know, as a for instance, we know that if we do phase two, you know, and I did a memo on it, we know that there's close to two hundred acres of potential residential development property that would be served and by water. That's a lot of potential residential development, which is what we are really looking for in the township. That's the stable tax base, that's the demand for water customers, sewer customers, you know, drawing more businesses into the township, those kinds of things. So, that's what you don't have, and that's what we need to project. And what might that do? And, you know, what would it cost if we continued to be purchasing water for that service from the city after two thousand twenty-eight? And, you know, those kinds of things. And what are we looking for? See, the, the issue that we're dealing with now is twenty-five years ago, there was a projected growth study done by the DEQ. Well, we didn't develop the way that they said we were gonna develop. We've developed linear, linear
Linearly?
In line with US forty-one. You know, and that's where the development has been. Well, now, we're moving further north and further west off of, west, west and northwest off of US forty-one and southwest along four ninety-two. Those were not developed. The big question that's out there is County Road five fifty. Are we, or are we not gonna be developing water and sewer services up five fifty to serve our residents, township residents, which go all, almost all the way to halfway, basically up five fifty? They're currently on their own well systems. How would you do that? You know, we've got the city of Marquette between us. You know, how do we get service there? Well, we also have access to property on Lake Superior. So, do we have our own small system that serves that portion of the township? I mean, that's, that's all in that, that mix of discussion.
Letter, memorandum, or addendum, I was calling it, the second meeting of March, public works preliminary discussion, the second meeting of April. What else? You wanna touch on the manager's contract and have that kind of a discussion?
Oh, you got that, you, you, Dave got his hand up.
Yeah, Dan's got his up.
Well, we've got a fire chief that's retiring in May first.
That's gotta be
I think we've got to really start moving on that real quick.
Well, the recruitment's already
That part's already kind of, you know, we can bring you a recommendation, but a lot of that is already in the works. If you wanna talk about it, we can.
Are we going outside?
I, I know nothing about it.
Yeah.
Who's talked about it?
So, let's just put it on the next agenda, Randy? And get them up to speed on where we are?
Sure.
Let's do that, okay? So, we don't take up this meeting doing, doing that. Okay. Yes, Dave?
I, I think with the, the, we don't need to just talk about the fire chief. We need to talk about a policy for the key position replacement policy. And that's what the board needs to make a decision. I know the manager's already working on the fire chief replacement. He just need, he just needs to bring us up to date on where it's at.
Remember, we have one employee. This board has one employee and it's Randy.
I understand that.
Now, some of this, even with the committee and stuff, are appointments, recommendations from me, but some of this has to happen by itself. So, the other half, yes, we can, if he gives us an update on what, where we are, what his recommendations are.
Well, I'm, the manager must have a recommendation. I'm not looking for the, the name of the guy that we're thinking about.
Right, no, no.
I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking the board needs to consider the policy that we're gonna look for, for the key replacement of personnel and just establish the policy. I don't think, other than the fire chief, none of those positions have been defined as, as a date that they need to be replaced. The closest that we know of is the manager, and the soonest is, is a year and ten months out, which is more than enough time to come up with a policy and start a search if we need to do it. We keep talking about superintendent of public works, we haven't heard a word whether he's gonna retire tomorrow or whether he's gonna retire in six years. We don't know. We just need to, we just need to have a, an agenda item so that we can determine what the policy's gonna be.
We have to create a policy first.
Correct. Are we gonna go outside, do an outside search with, with the firm? Or if we're gonna do it internally? And that's, that's the board decision that, that the policy needs to be about.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah.
Nothing about positions.
We don't have to worry about what Randy said. We already know that he's gonna go to the outside first because that's our policy.
We just, we just need, need a, an agenda item to make a policy on how we're gonna proceed to replace key personnel.
Okay.
Going along the same lines of Lynn, I, I agree with her. Our own employee is the township manager, so we deal with him. Beyond that, the board should make a policy that anything's under him, he deals with that key replacement.
Yeah, but that's not right, Randy.
Well, I think he's starting, he's, you finish it up wrong. You're, you're saying that the policy needs to be in place so that he'll tell us what he's gonna do. I don't know that that's what you were trying to say.
No, you tell him what you want to do. Is that your policy?
We need to discuss that policy and come up with a policy.
Yeah.
You already have a recruitment policy in place. And basically, what it amounts to is what Lynn says. I am your employee, they are my employees with the exception of the fire chief, which is a, an appointment by the supervisor with approval by the board. What I do is do the recruitment, find the candidates, make the recommendations to the board. Basically, the board makes the ultimate hire on some of those, some of those positions, but not on all of them. Some of them are delegated to the manager as making the final decision based upon qualification, skills, abilities, references, everything else.
And if we wanna tweak the legislative process of this, we probably could, but
And then you also have collective bargaining agreements that have provisions on how you, how you fill positions as well.
I think the three positions that we have to be concerned with because they're highly visible positions is manager, the fire chief, and the director of public works. Those three are highly visible positions for the township. And if anything happens, they're gonna come back to the board. So, as Dave said, we have to set up the policy and the procedure to follow for each, each one of them and that. So that when it does happen, the board may not have direct, I would say, hiring on any network, but they have set up the policy that be followed that because they are highly visible positions and that.
The succession plan.
So.
That goes back to two seven, two eight?
Dave, I'm letting Dave come back now.
No, John had a question.
Oh, okay, he had it up and he put his hand down.
Pardon me for being late. And I'll try to, I've had some dental work and I'll try to speak clearly.
Okay.
I think what's being asked for is not a revision of hiring policy that's been approved, but it's some greater knowledge of what's going on in the process so that if revision is required, at least it would be known so that it could be a discussion. I think that's all that's being asked for.
It's basically a monitoring report then.
Well, I see, as the manager alluded to, there are some bargaining agreements that may direct which way that has to go to replace certain personnel. That's the report that we need to discuss as an agenda item.
Have it written down.
We need to have all of that stuff that affects that in front of us so that we can make a decision. Are we gonna go outside for some of those personnel? At what cost? Are we gonna do it internally? But before we can even make that decision, we need to know what things are already in place with collective bargaining agreements and all that that, that affect that search process. And that's all I'm suggesting we need to discuss at a, at a agenda.
We'll do that the next meeting, Tuesday, okay?
I can see that, next Tuesday's getting longer.
Oh, really? It's just a short discussion, it really isn't.
There's nothing with us that is short, clearly.
Well, like I said, I, I think it's a monitoring report, basically, and what's going on in some of these items. And then, remember, in policy governance, a monitoring report, the board will accept any reasonable interpretation. And then it's up to us beyond that, that if we don't, as a group, agree with that, then we have changed that policy. But until then, I think the manager has that in a monitoring report and explains what's going on.
Okay. I agree. Okay. We do need to talk about the fire department capital needs. How do you want to?
Get you go in the May calendar because in my estimation, it's gonna take us at least till August, if you do wanna go out for a millage, to get the appropriate language drafted and approved because it has to be to the county clerk for the November ballot by early August.
I could offer a suggestion.
Sure, that's what we're here for.
The, the other thing on there was the planning department, which is directly affects the CIP reviews if they're still gonna go that way, which directly impacts the budget discussions. The fire department discussion, the chief already asked for that for a June or July discussion.
That's before he said he'd be gone in May. Yeah.
I would, I would, I'd like to see us put the planning department and get that discussion out of the way so that we can start the budget process on time, which would be an amazing feat all by itself.
You wanna look at May? Is that too late?
Yeah, I would think if you, if you discuss the process, the CIP process, and there'd be a pretty good idea what direction the master plan is going by, by May because a lot of that work will be done.
Bylaws will be done, your update?
All that stuff should be all done, and we should have, be able to take a good look at the planning department. And the biggest thing you gotta cover in the planning department is the CIP process. Are they gonna be part of it? Or, they haven't been historically, as long as I've been around, they've been kind of a cursory knot at it, but they
The general public works is working on their CIP stuff already.
It only hap, that only happened as a directive a couple, three years ago, that it came down legislatively that that's the way it was gonna happen, so.
I just, I would like to see that moved into May and then, and then put the budget in June or the fire department in June, but one of the two.
Okay.
Whichever one goes in June, you follow with the other one that didn't.
And we typically release the budget, the draft budget, to the board in July because we use June 30th figures.
Then we could, we could talk fire department in June, which should give us more than ample time to put something on the ballot if we decide to do that. And we could talk budget in, in July, after we've got all the information.
Maybe we should kinda plan on these board.
Second meeting of the month.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going, thank you. Yeah. And that would give us some, a, a nice framework anyway, because that's what I've been trying to establish, just some framework.
Well, if, if anything, I mean, there's gonna be some carryover on some of those, and there's gonna be some information coming back that we need to revisit it. We could always work that in the first meeting.
That, yeah, it's, it should be small enough that we've, you know, beat it up on the second meeting and we can bring it to the forward.
Yep.
Okay. So capital, do you wanna wait till the second meeting in May for the CIP discussion or you wanna tackle it?
Sure. As long as it's done before the budget.
Okay.
The, the departments don't turn in their CIPs until May sometime, right?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's about it.
They, they turn in their CIP requests in May sometime?
April, May.
April, May.
Yep.
Hmm. That's it? We only have five things to think about since here?
On the fire millage, when are we projecting to start discussion on that?
We can either tie it into the meeting on the, the CIP meeting, or we could, so if he's suggesting.
May or June.
The second meeting in May to talk about capital improvement and how that process works, we can tie fire into it?
Will that give us enough time to sit down and really discuss what that millage is gonna be for, both short term and long term?
That's what I'm concerned about.
Should be.
The language needs to be in by August?
August, early August.
Early August?
Yeah.
Gives you 45 days to talk about it.
Do you wanna focus on the CIP discussion in May and then, because I had written down capital for the second meeting and, for fire in June? Keep the two separate, knowing that fire and public works is gonna be part of that CIP discussion?
And then talk the budget in July?
Itemize it, itemize it for the fire department in June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the budget?
In July.
Probably the first meeting will start in July. I mean, will probably start in the first meeting in July, I'm guessing. Randy?
Just for preliminary, just to think about, start for the fire department potential millage discussion would, I would suggest that it be for apparatus maintenance and replacement specific, because we're, we're seeing now that the pieces of equipment that we have now, because of age, are starting to.
Starting to beat it up.
Expensive repairs. We've got one ongoing right now, so I would suggest that that be for, for apparatus maintenance and replacement as opposed to just generally equipment, because right now, we're trying to budget for that maintenance and replacement and it's not sufficient because it's, we need a fund, basically, to draw from.
And that's one of the better trucks.
Yeah.
So we don't.
It's one of the newer trucks.
Yeah.
The newest truck.
Because if we have to replace that aerial, we're talking big dollars, real quick, gonna.
Or a pumper.
Yeah, well, the aerial is, the aerial is not the one that we're really concerned about. You know, if, if we, if we, if we, if we replace, if, if we find ourselves in a position to have to replace the aerial, it's primarily gonna be from an accident or from damage that way. And we are insured for that and we're adequately insured for that to replace it. But the, the bigger concern that I have is our frontline stuff, the pumpers and the tankers, that we routinely run. The aerial doesn't, right now, it's running because we have our primary pumpers out of service. You know, just backing into the garage from a, from a response, the rear end pinion broke. So it's in repair right now. It's been out of service since last Thursday, but we're being covered by other, other entities. But that's gonna be an expensive repair. And those are things you just can't predict or, or plan for. So if there is a millage, I think the millage should be for that kind of activity. It should be for maintenance and for replacement. The target be maintenance of current vehicles and then the replacement when they need to replace. I think we're okay on the, we're good on the ambulance. I think we're good on the brush truck. The aerial, I'm not that concerned about because it doesn't get used that much. The, the real concern is the two primary pumpers, the rescue pumper and the, and the tanker pumper.
What I'm concerned with aerial, with Myers coming on, on board.
Yeah.
Right behind that up sky, if they come aboard.
That's a concern. That is a concern that we have with the developers of that up the sky project is, because they're talking about, you know, multi-story developments that are in difficult to access areas and our 70-foot ladder's not gonna be big enough to adequately reach them if you can't get close enough to the building. So their design is critical and we're working with them on the design to make sure that we have access to get close enough to the building. But when the aerial's replaced, we're gonna be having to replace it with a larger, larger ladder. Simple as that.
But just as long as the people who are listening to this, we do have backup and, you know.
We do.
They don't have to worry about, oh, what's not happening.
No, we're not in any critical need because even if, even if those buildings did exist currently, our response would be such that we would be there to, to maintain and to, to protect until the city or chocolate, either one of them, with, with bigger ladder trucks could, could be on scene. So I mean, we do have that backup capability and that's why we have mutual aid agreements. But my, my primary concern is our primary pieces of, of equipment. Not that they're, I mean, they're in good condition, but you just don't know. I mean, my, my, my four-wheel-drive pickup truck was 74,000 miles on it. I didn't expect the rear end to go out when I was pulling in my driveway, but it did. You know, and it shouldn't have. It was still under warranty. You know, those kinds of things happen, but you're out of service. That's the big thing, is it's out of service until it's repaired.
Some of the small things, because we don't use it every day, every day, every day, you know, by not using it, sometime that causes problems also.
Well, and really, the two that I'm concerned about are the ones that we use on a fairly regular basis. I mean, they are the, you know, if there's an accident or an incident on US 41, those are the two that get, that get dispatched, basically. And they're the ones that if something occurs that has them out of service, you notice it. You know, we, we do have, we do have backup from the other, from the other communities, which are close by, fortunately. I mean, they are very close. But, but that's still something that when it occurs, you know, you're talking eight, 10, $12,000 repair job. You know, it's not, it's not minor. Even though it's, it's a minor repair, it's an expensive repair, you know, so because, just because of the size of the equipment. So that's what I would suggest, that if we look at a millage, we look for that maintenance and replacement, you know, those, those two aspects.
I think that can be a discussion when we come up as to actually what the language will be and what actually that language will curtail or actually address to. Dave?
Just wondering if we can review what we got so far as far as their agenda items and when they are. Anybody write that down beside the supervisor?
Clerk did, obviously.
It'll be in my minutes. No, actually, no. Oh, actually, see Lynn's here.
Well, first thing up, I think, is the sheriff's contract memorandum, right?
Okay, so sheriff.
Second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March. First meeting in March will be the fire chief discussion, update where we're at.
So the key personnel replacement?
First, so that'd be next week.
Well, what I'll do.
That'll be an update.
For your next meeting, I will give you an update on where we are with the recruitment for the, the known vacancy.
Okay.
Coming up, as of June 1st.
So sheriff's department, the second meeting in March.
All these are second meetings.
Okay, then in April, we'll have the discussion on the water, the phase, phase two.
Second meeting in April is public works.
Public works. Second meeting in May will be the CIP slash planning.
Mm-hmm.
Second meeting in June will be the.
Fire.
Fire department discussion. Basically, that'll be probably a millage discussion. And then in July, the first meeting.
First July.
Will be the budget.
Okay.
And then August would be any language.
Well, we'll continue on from that point, see where we're at. But I think we got enough on our plate for the rest of the year, you know.
Here comes the supervisor. We've adjourned, right?
That'll teach me to leave, I'm sorry.
Basically, what we did, we reviewed Lynn, what, on your calendar, what we're going to do for the next couple of months as far as agenda items.
Okay.
Basically, that's where we're at now.
And those are the main ones we need to talk about, but this can also include any board education or if we wanna have any speakers come in, you guys can let us know. Anything that you see happening in the community? You know, if there's, we'll, we'll end up having somebody from the Board of Light and Power at some point coming in and giving us an update. So it isn't just about the main things that we have to discuss. There can be offshoots of this, more information, okay?
So you're gonna fill in more boxes of that spreadsheet and redistribute it?
I hope so, yeah. I think I'm gonna split this up by our dates, our meeting dates, and that'll be even clearer for you.
It's clear for the agenda makers, too.
Yep. And that's what this is for. It's 2018 meeting agendas. So like I said, it's not just for the main stuff, it's for anything we wanna put on here. So if you wanna talk about something in August, you know, just let us know. We'll get it in here so we don't forget. John?
Once again, I apologize for being late, but when the planning of what was going to be of interest to be in the discussion on the waterworks, what I wanna know is, was also included in that, what was the percentage of interest in planning for growth to satisfy that, going north in the community as opposed to going southwest?
You missed that conversation.
Is that part of it? If it isn't, I'd ask that it be part of it.
It is, yeah, because it's some.
I think I gotta get turned off. Some of the development land is north, straight north, in, towards, towards the lake.
Yeah, 'cause, well, not north towards the lake, but north out past the entranceway into Huron Woods.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where we have now in place, we have water and we have sewer.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, that's a great boondoggle. And it may be a lot cheaper to go that way than to go any other way. I just wanted, I wanted to know that in my absence, was that included? Is that part of it? Because it should be.
Yes, it is. It's part of the development plan.
And it may be the easiest and having the greatest potential for being developed by developers.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where you're going to get the residential properties that pay the taxes. Maybe many other areas going in other directions. But, but that is, that is one area that shouldn't be ignored, and I'd ask that that be included as well. And I would, whoever's going to be making comments on it, I would expect to find it there.
I think that's it, unless somebody has something else.
Hurry up and adjourn before Lynn passes out.
Seriously. Seeing another doctor tomorrow. Anything else?
Okay. I have one more.
Sure.
Because the manager is the one employee that the township board has, that's been, we've been reminded of that time and time again. Soon, I would hope, that a committee would be appointed so that they could be looking at what are the needs that we need to address as we get to that. It doesn't have to be discussed in detail here as, as to filling the other roles that need to be placed first. But I would think it would be good to have a committee formed that would be addressing the needs of what needs to be planned for as we replace the one employee that this board has. I ju, I just think, I'm asking that the supervisor give some thought to that, and I think we've got capable people to be placed on a committee, and they could address many of the things that are being addressed here today that don't need to be addressed by the full board or in the planning or in, in front of the township board. But they need to be addressing it because there are some very serious things that need to be thought about.
We did touch on that a little bit in the beginning of the meeting.
What happened?
We didn't really talk about your succession, the two things that you were gonna provide to us, the contracts and stuff. We didn't put that on the calendar. Do you, do you know when? Where should I put it?
I thought we talked about putting that on the first, um, meeting in March.
Yeah.
I have, all I had written down was the fire chief, um, policy.
That was an update, but we were talking about the policy that we're gonna look at with first meet.
First meeting in March, okay.
A week from Tuesday, right?
Is that it?
First meeting in March, yep. Thank you for reminding me, 'cause I didn't write that down.
That might be establishing a committee to go and look at that.
Could very well.
Thank you.
Yep. You, did you, are you putting your hand up? Oh, library millage. Do we wanna talk about that this year?
I don't know.
Is that what you're saying?
We're gonna have to.
When does that expire?
This year.
Expires this year, but there is a contract in place and we have to review that contract before we go forward. And I did talk to our attorney about that, and I believe we should make that an agenda item for probably June, because that will be tying and, well, it really isn't in our budget, 'cause it's just a pass-through, but, 'cause we don't see any benefit from it, but it is money that will come through the township, but I think June would be a good place for that. If, if the library director would like to come and, either in May or June, and make a presentation and...
So maybe the first meeting in June would be good.
Yeah, I'm thinking so.
That'll give us some time to talk about it after.
And it is in line with our contract with them.
Okay. What else? Anything?
You might wanna let the library know that we're gonna talk about that.
This is still a fluid document, you know, if you think of something, when you get home, or tell the manager, or the next meeting, you know, just 'cause we're talking about this now doesn't mean this is it for the year. Things can change. We can add or subtract.
I think it gives us a pretty good start.
Yeah, that's what I was, I've been wishing for, for the last couple of meetings. Okay? Nothing else? Okay, we can adjourn then.
Finished 10 minutes early.
We got public con, yeah, you're still here.
Oh, yeah, I suppose. We do have to follow that, but there's no public. I mean, if we had people sitting here, I wouldn't have thought of it.
Well, it's still gonna do it. It's still gonna do it.
I know. Nope, she's, Lisa's getting ready to leave. Any public comment? Any announcements? Board member comment?
Wait. The, the citizen survey that they're working on, there should be something to the board with our recommendation from the planning commission on the second week, or the second meeting in March.
I'll put that on here then.
Before you consider. And it's more a review of what they're proposing and decide if you wanna change any of the questions or anything like that.
You would still bring the proposed bylaw changes to the board first, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you'll get all that stuff, sure.
Okay.
The thing that the board needs to make their decision on, on that, on that survey is what their question, if they like the questions that are there, and then they need to review the procedure that, that is being recommended on how you wanna pursue getting on how you wanna pursue getting the survey out to the residents and what to do with the information when it's coming back. That'll all be presented at that second meeting.
Okay. Good. Any other comments? I'm so sorry for being so disruptive. I like I can control it, but... Anyway, we can adjourn now? Mr. Clerk? Two fifty-three?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
No, no motion, no motions in work session.
Thank you.
Just wrap your gavel, we're done.
I shall, for John.